Good afternoon, everyone. The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call, please.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device and log in for the quorum roll call. If you need support, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. All right, I will now take a voice vote for anyone who has not used the e-device. Alderman Laspada, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Dow. Dow is present. Alderman Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Hall, present. Alderman Mitchell, present. Alderwoman Ramirez, present. Alderman Quinn, present. Alderman Moore, present. Alderman Curtis, not present in chambers. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is here. Alderwoman Tabarez. Tabarez is present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is not present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, not present. Alderman Conway, present. Alderman Vegas, not present. Alderwoman Metz, present. Alderman Spasato, Spasato is present. Alderman Riley, present. Your mayor, we have a quorum.
Very well, thank you. There are 44 members that are present, so we do have a quorum. There are a number of alders that wish to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59, and they are as following: Laspada, Vegas, Burnett, Curtis, Rodriguez Sanchez, as well as Rodriguez. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to the roll call? It's been moved. Can we confirm their...
Yes, I will now call on the city council members for their presence on virtual. Alderman Laspada.
Present.
Laspada is present. Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Curtis is present. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Burnett is present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Here.
Present. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Vegas. Vegas, I think that was a present. Okay, Vegas is present, and I see Alderman Rodriguez is in chambers. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very well, just to make sure we complete. All those in favor of these individuals being able to participate remotely signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. This motion passes. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Pastor Rand Tucker of the Vineyard Church of Hyde Park.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Good things are happening in the city of Chicago. Just one testimony, this last Sunday, New Life Little Village took over our facility. They had started a church, a Chinese-reformed Christian church in our neighborhood, and 24 newly arriving couples got married in our sanctuary altogether. And before I pray, I just want to thank you all for making this a welcoming and sanctuary city, and God is doing great things here. Let's pray. Father, you are always present, and we pause to invite your Spirit to be present here today to lead and guide at this time. Lord, we know that civil service is sacred because we are gifted to lead and bless those who are under our leadership, and we seek to serve them. We pray that your kingdom would come here in Chicago, on earth just as it is in heaven. I pray, in the place of fear, anger, sadness, that you would bring love, joy, and peace, that you would provide for each person in this city. You would provide food, shelter, education, healthcare, safety, and the opportunity not just to survive, but to thrive. I pray that you would make this city prosper, provide safety, strength, and success to public servants, industrious workers, and the private sector. Bless small business owners and entrepreneurs who create jobs to employ others and bring not only small business, but big business, but only those who would leave a positive legacy. Father, help us to be a city of forgiveness rather than of violence, a place of unity in the midst of diversity, a place of cooperation where we have differing agendas. I pray today that this city council would make godly decisions and good ones for the sake of the people. Lord, may this city that has historically been divided by race be a place of reconciliation, and as Jesus said, may this be a place that we could love our neighbor as ourself. And Lord, I pray that you would protect us from evil, for our battle is not ultimately against flesh and blood, it's not ultimately against other human beings. The battle is against principalities and powers of darkness in this world. Help us to resist evil with good, and help us to shine light into darkness. Thank you for the leadership that is represented in this room, and I pray that you would guide each one of them and all of them together in major decisions and mundane activities. Thank you for their sacred service. May your blessing be upon them to serve and lead. And Lord, our prayer is that the wind of your Spirit might bless the windy city and may it prosper. Lord, may it be so.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the call of today's special meeting. Yes, the chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
On a point of personal privilege, I just wanted to state that I'm wearing these glasses due to a medical condition. I meant no disrespect to have them on during the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Very well, noted. Madam Clerk, please read the call of today's special meeting.
Call for special meeting. The following call for a special meeting of the City Council was filed in my office on Tuesday, November 12, 2024, at 1:28 p.m. Clerk Valencia, we, the undersigned members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, do hereby call a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago to be convened on Thursday, November 14, 2024, at 2 p.m. The special meeting is for the following purpose and no other purpose whatsoever, for the immediate consideration of the 02024-001-3679, an ordinance authorizing the fiscal year 2025 property tax levy. On behalf of the City of Chicago, signed: Raymond Lopez, Alderperson 15th Ward; Marty Quinn, Alderperson 13th Ward; Savannah Tabarez, Alderperson 23rd Ward; Scott Wagaspek, Alderperson 32nd Ward; Matt O'Shea, Alderperson 19th Ward; Monique Scott, Alderperson 24th Ward; Michelle Harris, Alderperson 8th Ward; Peter Chico, Alderperson 10th Ward; Brendan Riley, Alderperson 42nd Ward; Bennett Lawson, Alderperson 44th Ward; Pat Dow, Alderperson 3rd Ward; Nicole Lee, Alderperson 11th Ward; Emma Metz, Alderperson 37th Ward; James Gardner, Alderperson 45th Ward; Anthony Napolitano, Alderperson 41st Ward; Nicholas Spasato, Alderperson 38th Ward.
Very well, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments. The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been made or submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Gina Geddy.
Hello, am I coming through?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. Hello, City Council. My name is Gina Geddy. I live in the 41st Ward. Thank you for the opportunity to address City Council today. My purpose for speaking today is the bill banning the sale of new fur in Chicago. I'd like to thank my Alderman Napolitano and the other alders who have already co-sponsored this bill, and today I am asking for the rest of the city councils to support and pass this bill to ban the sale of new fur. It has come to my attention that fur farms are breeding grounds for viruses such as or worse than COVID-19. I'd like to share some concerning information from a September 2024 article published in The Telegraph. Virologists involved in the study of fur farms are very concerned with what they call a zoonotic soup of viruses in farmed animals. Here is what one virologist had to say. What this study tells you is that these species are also full of viruses, and some of these viruses are jumping species boundaries. This fur trade is a roll of the dice. We're exposing ourselves to viruses that come from wildlife, which is an obvious route for the next pandemic to occur. Another researcher said, "The conclusions aren't specifically Virus X was found in mink or raccoon dogs and therefore is a direct singular pandemic threat, but more, this practice seems to bring lots of divergent unusual viruses together from wildlife and farm sources, which creates a mixing pot for virus evolution and emergence," end quote. I know none of us want to see another COVID-like pandemic, and as COVID tragically taught us, whether a virus comes from a fur farm in China or Europe or the U.S., it can spread to the whole world. I don't want to roll the dice on that, and this is why I'm calling on City Council to make Chicago a leader in pandemic prevention and to ban the sale of new fur. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Please.
Our next speaker is Joy Bunton.
Joy, please press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good afternoon, Joy.
Good afternoon. Hi, I'm Joy Bunton, born and raised in Chicago, as were my parents. They, myself, and my siblings all went to Chicago Public Schools. I went to Witten Yonk. My late father, a black man like the mayor, was a CTU member. He went to U of I at Champion Urbana and Northwestern for his bachelor's and master's. He taught at Inglewood, where his choir was the first from a black school to receive superior ratings at state competition. He was later promoted to an admin job as vocal music coordinator for CPS and conducted all city high school chorus for many years. He was the epitome of black excellence. I'm often greeted by people who were his former students and loved him very much, many of whom have gone on to do great things. I'm grateful he had good benefits and a decent pension. Long after he retired, he survived a heart attack, but his health further declined. He got a form of Parkinson's and dementia, which was very painful to watch. Thankfully, my parents were able to get a caregiver for him, and after he died, my mom didn't have to move. We still have alders in office who are rubber-stamped for Rahm Emanuel, who ruled carte blanche. They let him close black schools and fire black teachers, which led to a $9.25 million settlement. There was no request to meet with the school board, which he appointed. No questioning of the CEO. Balance was allowed to take on payday bond loans to the tune of $650 million. Chief Administrator David Battal issued $1 billion in toxic swaps. I partly blame Obama for endorsing Rahm in the first place and other Dems like Dick Durbin, who endorsed reelection even after he boxed the Laquan McDonald's case, and David Axelrod kicked rocks for recommending Rahm be DNC chair. Where were the alders who said nothing while Rahm Emanuel screwed students, teachers, and principals over, especially in the black community? Since Mayor Washington, we finally have a mayor who wants to fully fund public schools and pensions, but now there's an issue, there's resistance. He and CTU went to Springfield in May to try and get the state to pay the $1 billion it owes to avoid raising property taxes. This mayor decided to forego a raise, but the alders who co-signed Rahm Emanuel's actions aren't doing that. Are y'all's pensions fully funded? How about firemen, policemen? All city and municipal employees should have their pensions fully funded, including CTU. I read the last property tax hike was under Rahm Emanuel, and those alders who are still here voted for it. This mayor is trying to take care of the city's employees, not demanding CPS take out a high-interest loan anymore. Some of you have your six-figure incomes, raises, benefits, and pensions, want to let other employees lose their jobs. The double standard is disgraceful. Those who are fine with mismanaging CPS and demonizing CTU, which is member-led, for fighting to give all students resources they deserve, and you're co-signing their pensions not equally funded, ripping them off. You should be ashamed of yourself, being independent now under Johnson but not then under Rahm. Do the tiffs or whatever, but start fully funding pensions that teachers and staff earn. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tawon Sims. Apologies. Our next speaker is Taiwan Sims.
You have a moment to settle a score or divide a people or just get to the bottom of it, but you, Brandon Johnson, have ignored every plea, call, cry that I or any individual have come in this room and made. I called about my child, 23D79597. Yosuke Roosevelt Sims told you about the attack that's been taking place. I came in here and told you that I'm homeless. My HMIAS number is 355061. I came in here, but I came in here because I wanted my life back, and lo and behold, wow, the answers that I've gotten. But you, sir, said also the other day that the presidency or Trump disrupts black Americans. It doesn't. You disrupt black Americans. You, your workforce development scheme with Michael David Rodriguez, your immigration scheme with Vasquers, and your housing scheme with C. J. Lopez, you are criminal. You should be investigated by the IG, who I was glad who was in here the day that Maria Haden was in here, the gangster girl who ran me up out of my neighborhood. I've been shot five times, six times. I've been persecuted, followed over a case, CV, no, 22CV5691, that was in the Northern District. This took place in 2020, July 22. I told them about a young man named Brian Carrion who was murdered in the street, chased around like as if he was a Marjorie Hargrave. I told y'all so much, but I know it's a gangster in this room, a criminal, one that thinks that he is a bull of the law, that he can dictate the law, Mr. Katun Zara, Mr. Katun Zara, the man who argued with you because y'all want to be relevant. But I'm telling you, the people in the city of Chicago need good representation. They need a representation that don't lean towards corruption. They need a representation that don't use people because they think they can, and you and them people over there, y'all that, I've been running from cowards that want to show me as a weak man. I'm not a weak man. My child, Ian Walter Obi Sims, I want to be back with them. Y'all put an order protection. All of these papers is the ways that y'all have tried to what? Criminalize me, villainize me, all ignoring of it. Cornerstone, Ms. Clay, this is a room full of criminals, y'all. This is a room full of criminals, and they don't want this man up here, because I don't look, y'all can bird dog me all y'all want, but if y'all, if it's relationship over duty, then y'all don't serve the blue, and y'all don't pledge the oath. Y'all pledge to serve us, not Katun Zara, not a personal interest, which y'all do, and you can smirk all you want.
Mr. Sims, direct your attention towards me, please.
You're a criminal, why do I got to address you? The feds need to address you, DOJ need to address you, and hopefully Donald Trump will address you, because you're going to protect the undocumented, while you're going to allow for the citizens in Chicago to suffer under your what? 33%? You and C. J. Lopez cooked that 3% up a long time ago. Y'all call it a circuit breaker. Y'all been talked about it. Remember, before you came in here and gave that jovial speech? You need to be inspected. You wearing that creep over there?
Mr. Clerk, would you take a moment here? We have the former Alder of the 40th Ward, 1979 to 1983, Mr. Ivan Rittenberg. Thank you, Alderman, for joining us today. Can you all just please give a quick acknowledgement to the Alderman? Thank you very much. Thank you for that salute there. Please, Mr. Clerk, please continue with our public speakers.
Our next speaker this afternoon is Dan McNamara.
Sergeant-at-Arms, please restore order, please. Thank you. Mr., to our Sergeant-at-Arms, could you all please make sure that this gentleman is removed? Thank you. Just okay, just patient, you all. They're handling it. It's all right. Thank you. Please continue to move Mr. Sims out of the chamber. Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms, for restoring order. Mr. Clerk, could you please continue with our public speakers?
Our next speaker this afternoon is Dan McNamara.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Dan McNamara, Mayor Johnson, City Council. The reason for my being here today...
Excuse me for a second. Listen, listen, please. Do not want to cast any judgment on Mr. Sims, but we are fully aware of that disruption and what happened there. I would kindly and respectfully ask that this body and those that are here to observe government to come back to order and allow the police and anyone else who can help address that situation and bring it under control. In the meantime, order has been restored. Dan, you may begin again.
Okay. My name is Dan McNamara. I've been a citizen of the city since 1979. My purpose in being here today was that I was hoping to begin a dialogue about a strategy that could effectively put over $100 million back in the city budget without cutting costs, services, or employees, and without raising taxes. On, Mayor, on September 24, I sent a letter to your office, and with your permission, I'll just read a portion of the letter, and it might explain why I'm here. It says, "Honorable Mayor Johnson, I'm writing you about the urgent matter facing your administration in the city of Chicago budget. There is considerable stress in the news recently about looming deficits, both operational and legacy. If there was a way to restore over $100 million annually to the city coffers without cutting services or raising taxes, how would you prefer to learn about it? In the simplest terms, the city can achieve 2,500 to 7,500 per-employee reduction per year in quantifiable healthcare cost reductions. By the way, the unions, many of them, are already on board with this kind of strategy." But here's the catch. It takes a certain amount of backbone to get these kinds of initiatives past the entrenched status quo. While Mayor Lightfoot initially showed enthusiasm for this, nearly all of the lower-level administrators dropped the ball and failed to follow through on even giving this course of action a proper vetting. I'm hoping that now your administration is up to the task." And then it goes on to ask that you have your budget director or CFO get ahold of me to further this discussion. First, I'd just like to confirm that you got this letter, and do you recall reading it? I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions or not. If so, what will it take to begin a discussion about this kind of initiative in your administration? So, the thing that I'm hoping for is to get some eyes and ears looking at this as a possible strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this afternoon is Jessica Jackson.
What you just saw with Sims is where you want all of us to be. You want all of us to be stockade out of our minds. You want us to feel pressed against the wall. You want us to feel helpless. You want us to feel hopeless. You want to see us turn on one another. But it's some real ones out here, and we gonna stick together. But when it come to people like you, Brandon Johnson, black people like you, who sit up here and think you gonna bully us, that's why everybody coming after you now, including Kwame Raoul. But we gonna come for him, because he ain't doing what he's supposed to do. He's not helping us the way he's supposed to help us. You want to sit here and watch us be aggravated like that. You, that lady next to you, what is it, Mary Richardson, Lori, her too, not doing her job, you too, not doing your job, acting like, you know, you just gonna bully everybody. You got people, what, officers, whose families don't even want you to come to the funeral. You just like a schoolyard bully, that at some point, and you might not know nothing about it because you grew up in Elgin, but those of us who grew up on the South Side and West Side of Chicago, we all know that at some point that bully gets cornered in an alley, and everybody come at him, and he ain't gonna have nobody to help him. That's you. That's you. Keep thinking you ain't gonna, you ain't gonna abide by what the President of the United States said. Everybody know better than that. I see you, Anna Valencia, in your red. You know what it is. This is the second time you showed up in city council in red. You know what it is? Yeah. Yeah. So you and the rest of them that know what time it is, y'all come on. You leave that loser where he is. He's a loser. He's a loser. No, me and Zoe, we ain't doing nothing for nobody except for ourself. We got you, loser.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Jody Weidicker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Johnson and Chicago City Council. I know that today's meeting is focused on the city's budget, but if a pandemic hits our city or the country, Chicago will have even bigger financial worries. That's why I'm urging you to please support, co-sponsor, and pass 02023-2983, the humane measure to ban the sale of new fur in Chicago. Here is another excerpt from another scientific journal article about these serious threats dated September 8, 2024. "A recent study has identified 125 viruses circulating in animals from fur farms in China, raising concerns about the potential spillover into human populations. Led by Chinese researchers and co-authored by virologist Edward Holmes, the study emphasizes the urgent need for enhanced virus monitoring." Led by Chinese researchers and co-authored by virologist Edward Holmes, the study emphasizes the urgent need for enhanced virus monitoring. Among the viruses discovered, thirty-six were previously unknown and thirty-nine were deemed high risk for crossing species barriers, possibly infecting humans. Published in Nature, the research spanned from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four, examining four hundred and sixty-one animals, primarily minks, foxes, raccoon dogs, rabbits, and muskrats from fur farms, with some from the food and traditional medicine industries. About fifty animals, wa- I'm sorry, around fifty wild animals were also included. The viruses detected included hepatitis E, Japanese encephalitis, and thirteen newly identified ones underscoring fur farms as potential hubs for virus transmission. Holmes and other experts stressed that without proactive measures, fur farms could spark the next global outbreak. Holmes warned, "The fur farming trade could easily lead to another pandemic virus. Scientists are urging global governments to take the warning seriously and implement policies to mitigate the risks posed by fur farming," end quote. So banning the fur of fur in the second city won't stop pandemics, but we will be doing our part as a progressive city to end the immense suffering of beautiful wild animals and prevent the real risks of dangerous viruses jumping from wild animals who are tightly confined and languishing in filthy, disease-ridden cages to humans. Thank you very much for your time and consideration today, and I hope that this common sense ordinance advances and passes very soon. And I hope you all have a safe and happy holiday with your loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Tyler Cruz.
Good afternoon, City Council. Um, I'm a concerned citizen who's in his mid-to-late thirties, working in finance, and I've called Illinois home for my entire life. I grew up in the suburbs, went to school down in Champaign, and I've called Chi- Chicago's North Side my home for the last fifteen years in the Second Ward, Brian, uh, Mr. Hopkins. I'm married with no kids yet and one dog, and we are property owners. We bought our, uh, uh, home in twenty-twenty-one when everyone else was flocking from the city, and it's sad to say that I used to be proud of calling myself a Chicagoan. Despite being a white male, I did not vote for Donald Trump, and I did not grow up privileged. My mother was a school nurse, and my father worked in the trades. I had to get a full-ride scholarship to college in order to pay for my education. I'm devastated to see what has unfolded over the last eighteen months under the current mayor. We are living in a kleptocracy. As we stand at a critical juncture in Chicago's future, it is essential that we hold our leaders accountable and address the pressing issues that affect every single resident of this city, not just the unions and not just the new arrivals, as the mayor refers to them. Today, I'm here to express serious concerns about Mayor Bran- Brandon Johnson's leadership and the direction that he is taking in Chicago. Under Mayor Johnson's leadership, Chicago's pension crisis has only deepened. We have over thirty billion dollars of unfunded pension liabilities. Our city is facing a financial burden that threatens to cripple future generations. The pension obligations are destroying the city and squeezing people out of the city, and yet nothing has changed. Chicago's pension debt has soared by over two billion dollars in the last year. One week ago, the mayor tweeted that the budget we unveil today is furthering our investment towards a better, stronger, and safer Chicago. The plan to fill the budget shortfall included raising taxes on property owners after numerous attempts in the past that have all been shut down by voters and cutting spend for police reform. Neither of these initiatives will result in a stronger and safer Chicago. The, uh, bond rating agency KRBA recently put Chicago's bond rating on watch downgrade, indicating it will be downgraded if the budget does not sufficiently address the structural deficit. The inability to support headcount reductions by the current mayor is lunacy. I myself was unfortunately a part of a reduction in force in October, which is why I'm here at two o'clock on a Thursday. It happens, and people will survive. It happens all the time in private, in the private sector. Instead of making the difficult but absolutely necessary cuts to, uh, to government spending, continues to push for tax hikes. Our infrastructure is a mess. The bridges are disaster. The roads and traffic is a, is a joke. Servicemen, I have several friends on the force, and they are exhausted. We have a lack of fire trucks, last, uh, significant amount of overhand, overtime spend, and it is ridiculous. We're relying on casinos. We're relying on property tax increases instead of addressing the true issue, which is we have an addiction to spending. We do not have a revenue issue. We have an addiction to spending. I know I have two seconds. Um, I urge my fellow Chicagoans to continue pushing for responsible leadership-
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you very much for your comments. All of your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mrs. Lawrence.
I'm gonna start off with talking about the budget and the real estate and all these things, and I'm gonna get it out in three minutes. Fourteen percent rating is what you appear to have, Brandon Johnson, across the United States, or how they see you. But fourteen percent rating. Now, I'm gonna talk about all your, those known donations of eleven-point-five million dollars that came from places like the CTU, the SEIU, the American Federation of Teachers, Illinois Federal, uh, Federation of Teachers, and if someone got the nerve to get on there and talk about cutting, uh, their pensions, what about our real estate? Because see, we paid for these properties for a purpose and not for you to go touching it with three hundred million dollars that you want to siphon out of the citizens' pockets. Get rid of the illegals, and that'll take your money right back. Started off with that. Now, let's go to a lot of the people here, these aldermen. We had thirty-one aldermen, and we got one that's playing on the fence about protecting the citizens and their real estate and these property tax increases. But let's also talk about these, uh, aldermen, that we got fifteen of them that's getting money from the CTU. Since two thousand and nine. Oh, yeah, I'm bringing the facts. The facts is only what I'm gonna talk about. And let's also talk about the five aldermen who not supporting the citizens, but also are not supporting with this, uh, and receiving money from CTU as well. So, you five, you know who you are, and so do I. List right in my hands. Also, uh, let's talk about the four-point-one percent increase of salary for twenty-twenty-five, starting from a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to a hundred fifty-two. So, I mean, this is all public information. It's not like it's something that's hidden. So, 'cause us as citizens, we need to know what's going on, 'cause all of you all are called mini-mayors. And the mini-mayors are responsible for the citizens within your wards. You are accountable, not just responsible, to be able to speak up on our behalf and not sit here weak and not stand up for us. But the thirty-one that has stood up, thank you. For the one that's riding the fence, who don't want to sign the letter, but says that he's not gonna vote for this, half thank you. 'Cause a man gonna stand up, and we know who all of you are, because again, it's in my hands. So, don't think you're not known, because this is public. So when you collecting money from somewhere, just know that, uh, people like me, research, find out, and expose. Speak up for your citizens.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Dennis- Our next speaker is Dennis White.
Good evening, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I wanna know, how does it feel that Trump is in office right now? You see the, you see the, uh, Mayor Brandon Johnson, you underestimate us. You underestimate the black people, and you underestimate Chicago red. We're the thorn in y'all's side, and we're gonna be in the thorn on everybody else in this council member's side, too. If you don't stop what you're doing, we gonna take matters in our own hand, and we gonna stop it. When you took ShotSpotter off after the DNC, and so more shots have been committed, do you know how many people got shot and killed? Twenty. One was a police officer, and he was doing his duty. And then some maniac over here wanted to shoot him dead, cold-blooded, and stuff. So my, my, my thoughts and prayers to the family of that Chicago police officer, Ralph Hand. But Brandon Johnson, I'm gonna say this to you once. I'm not gonna repeat myself again. If you don't stop this madness, not only we're gonna come after your seat, but guess what? The worst news is, Trump assigned Matt Gaetz as the AG. Once he come in after you, he gonna sit up here and audit all this money that you've been spending on these illegals at the barber shop on the South Side that didn't have no money, so far from you, and stuff. So, why? I, I know what's gonna happen. You gonna go down to the press conference, beat your chest up, and then you gonna talk all that smack. And then you gonna say, if a black man has not had an opportunity like a white man. But guess what? I'm a black man, and I don't see at you. I see through you. And I see the lies that you have been saying since you became office. We had enough problem with Lori Lightfoot, and now she's at, she's out because of racism. So when we vote you out, which racism are you gonna address? White racism or black racism? You say, you cannot, you cannot, you cannot figure out what the lesser of the two evil will be. So guess what's gonna happen? You know that Trump had pulled forty-five percent of the voter in the state of Illinois, thirty-seven in the city of Chicago? That's the statistic. That mean that Illinois is turning purple. We gonna turn red. And for the Sunday City Councilman, member, I warn you, do not sit with Brandon Johnson. We gonna get them seats.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Zoe Lee.
I'm gonna start with, uh, what you said, what, Tuesday?
I'm gonna defend the people of this city, because look, his attack, let's be very clear, uh, the president-elect, former President Trump, um, his threat is not just towards new arrivals and undocumented families. His threats are also against black families. He has a vision to destroy public education. So when he talks about Project Twenty-Twenty-Five and dismantling public education, we're talking about a system that has been designed to create leveling opportunities for families who are descendants of slaves.
You always wanna use black people in your press conferences, but don't do nothing for black people in Chicago. You already know why I'm here, and I've been coming here for a year. Before I even knew who you was as a mayor, you was dipping off, going to sides when I was out there protesting. You have corporate counsel right next to you, Mary Richardson-Lawrie, who has no idea what she's doing, because if she was, she would have told you to settle my case. Okay? So, yeah, you can look the other way and roll your eyes and do all that stuff, but you do not care about the black Chicago citizens. Okay? You trying to push this socialist agenda in this capitalist society. In two thousand and nineteen, when you was leadership, head leadership with CTU, y'all did a little GoFundMe and went over to Venezuela, because y'all already knew what y'all were gonna do with bringing them all over here, right? So you're pushing, so you're pushing this agenda with the illegal immigrants, because y'all done stole all their money, because you thought that after that fifty-one million dollars that the feds gave you back then, that, that Biden was gonna keep sending y'all money. But as you know, Biden is the real racist. The one that y'all say Trump is, Biden been racist. Biden been racist for a long time. He just popped up with Obama as the Vice President, and everybody just forgot. Okay? You have, again, you have no idea how you're, you're, how to govern. Twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, we're going to get you out. Tony Preckwinkle out, JB Pritzker out, Kwame Raul out, and probably half of the disgraced fifty out, too. And the disgraced fifty is the alderman. Okay? My case should have been settled. They stealing black people's property and land in the city of Chicago, and they've been doing it for a very long time. Okay? Majority of the people that work for the city of Chicago and Cook County are realtors or, or part of real estate agents. That is a conflict of interest, so that's why y'all keep stealing our property and our lands. And y'all think that it's gonna be okay, and you're gonna, and it's gonna keep happening. It's not going to happen. It's not gonna keep happening. We have a new Department of Justice, and it's, and, 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 and at the end of that, we have people that are running for office.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your, your honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign up for the public comment period.
Very well. Thank you, Mister Clerk. This concludes the public, uh, comment period. For the special meeting agenda as set forth in the letter calling for the special meeting, the only item up today for consideration is item number zero-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-zero-one-three-six-seven-nine, an ordinance authorizing the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five property tax levy. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
In order that we may consider this item today, I move to suspend the rules by roll call vote.
Very well. Madam Clerk, could you please, uh, make the e-vote application available for the suspension of the rules vote? Uh, members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. I will now take a voice vote for any of those, um, did not use the e-device. Alderman Laspada.
Yes.
Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
Yes.
Curtis is a yes. Alderman Burnett.
Yes.
Burnett is a yes. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Vegas.
Yes.
Vegas is a yes. The voting is now closed.
Very well. There are fifty yays, zero nays. This motion passes, and the rules are suspended. As we prepare, if there are any individuals that wish to speak to this, um, I do know that there are variant thoughts and expressions around this particular item. We would ask that you all respect each other's time and, um, contain your comments, uh, to a minimal. Um, as I've said before, I remain committed to being a true collaborator during this budget process. I do appreciate the seriousness of the members of the City Council, who are, again, rolling up their sleeves, working with our team, as well as me, to secure a balanced budget that works for all of Chicago. Uh, this budget must reflect our values, including directly investing into the people of Chicago. We remain focused on ensuring our budget has progressive revenue sources at its core. As I've stated from the beginning, I will negotiate the details of this budget, but I certainly will not negotiate my values. Again, are there any members who wish to speak to this item? The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the City Council. First, I would make a motion, uh, to appro- I move to approve zero-two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-zero-one-three-six-seven-nine ordinance authorizing the fiscal twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five property tax levy, and call the question on the motion.
Well, there's a motion to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, if, if none of us are going to speak, I do want to say a few things to this, uh, ordinance specifically, and kind of, um, explain a couple things. Um- and kind of explain a couple things. I know you called the question, sir. I'm just, we generally have, we generally allow for comment before we do call the question. I thought that you were raising your hand to give comment, not to call the question.
Just hold on a second. I'll recognize you in just a second, okay? I promise, I'm pretty good at that. Yeah, so the previous question of calling the question, the motion, rather, is not debatable. So with that, all those in favor of calling a question signify by saying aye, and the opposed say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would ask for a roll call on the original motion.
Very well. So there's a motion for this ordinance to be completed with a roll call vote. So with that, members, please use the e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Madam Clerk, if you would.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. I will now call on those who have not cast their vote for a voice vote. Alderman Laspada.
No.
Laspada is a no. Alderman Curtis.
No.
Curtis is a no. Alderman Burnett.
No.
Burnett is a no. Alderman Irvin.
I abstain.
Irvin, you can't abstain. Not in the rules. You have to take a vote, or you take a walk. No, you have to take a vote. If you're in your seat, I can't move past you. I don't ever know. Jeff, he has to take a vote if he's present. You have to take a vote if you're present in chambers.
Okay, so first of all, let's not shout across the room, you all. So the rules were suspended just for the enabling of this vote and not for all purposes, and so therefore, all members in the room have to cast a vote.
Alderman Irvin is no. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Vegas.
No.
Vegas is a no. The voting is now closed.
There are zero nays, 50 nays. This matter has been voted down. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, if there's no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so order this meeting to adjourn.